He's giving back some of their sick leave accruals. And it's been very good, I think it's been a very good plan. It calls for the city to make a contribution of 1% with a minimum of $350 into an account owned by the city and the interest earnings on that and the deposits into that are tax-free as long as then when the employee retires, he uses it for qualified IRS, qualified medical costs. So it's a good plan. Every dollar put in, they get about a dollar forty back because of the tax savings. So at the time we did it, one of the negatives was that it was an all or nothing thing. You could not, employees could not choose. They all had to go in. And I had a couple of employees that, well, they didn't, were not opposed to it. I'm not sure they would have gone into it, but they did it for the good of all the employees. But now there have been some changes with IRS and that makes it more flexible. So, and that's what these incorporate. The, and I'm gonna go through them kinda quickly. One of them is increase the 350 to 425 minimum. Another one is to allow employees the option when they become eligible, whether they want to go into the plan or whether they want to stay out. Another one is allow all employees that are currently in the plan at one time irrevocable election if they want to get out of the plan and go back to where they were before. And a fourth one is, we had some employees ask if they could voluntarily contribute some of their own money into the plan when they leave employment. And under the old rules, they couldn't do that. This now allows them to make that choice. And then the last one is it clarifies a little bit about the sick leave balance, whether the city can put that in or not. There was a question about someone that maybe was eligible and in the plan, but then they used a lot of sick leave and went below the minimum, so now they're not eligible when they retire, were they eligible for that 10% or not? It was a little unclear. We always meant for them to be eligible, but this clarifies it. So answer questions about it, or you want to say something about it?
No, I think that's it.
Just a couple of questions.
Is this gonna, who will this affect? Just folks who retire, or will it also be terminations, people who voluntarily leave? And does it affect management as well as personnel?
It affects everyone other than those covered by the bargaining agreements. And we cannot cover them unless it was bargained for. And it's once, anytime they leave, anytime they leave employment, doesn't really matter. So that's what we're, for this purposes, that's what we're calling retirement, is leaving employment with the city, so.
Okay. And what's the financial impact in the worst-case scenario and in the best-case scenario?
There's very little impact. These changes, perhaps a small amount, but the total cost of these changes was less than $3,000 a year. And the total cost of the program, and when we first set the program up, everybody said it's a good program, but the administration told me, "Well, you have to find a way to pay for it that doesn't cost any money." So, I mean, that made it pretty tough. And the way we did, like talking to employees, was thought they agreed, they said, "Well, maybe we can give back some of our sick leave that we might accrue." So that's how, basically, the program is paid for, is a break even, is by them accepting less sick leave accruals.
Mr. Hayes, did you have a question?
No, I was just gonna ask. In the past five years, it seemed like it was a benefit, you know, from your perspective. It was a benefit for most of the employees. What would be some of the reasons why some employees would not want to get into this kind of program?
Someone may, someone may say, "I would rather have the higher sick leave accruals." Maybe they're worried that they will become sick later on in employment with the city. And so maybe that's more important to them than being concerned about saving money for their healthcare costs after they retire. But that's why, as eligibility, there's a minimum, they have to have 300 hours accrued sick leave before they're eligible. So that smaller accrued sick leave balance, yeah, that's real important to the employees. They don't want to give any of that up. And they said that, and we recognize that. But as they accrue more and more, they see less benefit of that. And so really, I think the employees that have the higher accruals are the ones that are more excited by the program, although there's no, there's really no one that really told me ever that they would not do the program. There's some people that expressed some concerns about it and weren't sure, but no one ever told me, "This is a terrible program. I wish I wasn't doing it."
Mr. Roberts?
I'm sorry. Ms. Hayes?
Rather than say, "Here it is," do you, as personal director, sit down with these people and explain to them the benefits of staying with the program?
Well-
The reason I ask this, because, you know, some companies have the 401Bs and 403Bs and whatever they are. And a lot of employees neglect to take advantage of that, even with the employer putting a sizable amount to go along with it. And then later on, when they get ready to retire, they wish they had. So, you know, my question is, are you gonna take the time to explain this to the employees so that they really understand what it is that they're doing?
Yes, actually, that's part of the whole revisions that we have before us here, because before, people didn't have a choice. So we tried to explain the advantages, but it kinda sounded like a hard sell since they didn't have a choice. People are kinda suspicious that they don't have a choice and you're telling them it's good for them. I think when people have a choice and you're explaining both sides, then they really know that they are making a choice and they don't feel resentful of being forced into a situation. So now we'll be able to do that. And the previous ordinance had, the way information was presented, it had a lot of information that really needed to be in the plan documents but are confusing to employees, and people were kind of reluctant to wade through all of that. So we've rewritten the ordinance for a couple of reasons. One, because it would no longer be consistent with this resolution, because it repeats some of the same information in the plan document that we're changing. But also because that kind of detail kinda scares people away. So we're trying to move towards the ordinance only covering broad policy and benefit levels, and then we'll design employee communications that are specific to the item that we're trying to communicate, just for the reason that you said, because things can be confusing unless they're tailored to the employee, whereas plan documents have to be so legalistic that they're hard to understand.
Ms. Abrams?
I was just gonna ask about what percent of the people here in the city who are working are eligible for this? You said, "These are basically the people who don't have a negotiated contract."
There are about 50 people in the plan, so it's a small enough number that we can truly talk to each one of them. And I have spent time talking to different people about it. Probably about 50 of, I would say, 85 or 90 people. Those that, those that are not eligible are usually employees that have just started and haven't built up 300 hours sick leave. So it takes, normally, it takes about the first four years, four and a half years before you hit that $300.
Does the city allow unending accumulation of sick leave, or is there a cap?
Yes, it does.
Ms. General?
I'd like to make a motion to move this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
If there are any discussion with regard to the motion?
Is that both, both items?
Do we have two items, of course?
Yeah. It's one agenda item.
Okay, yes, the two items, yes.
Yeah. There is no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is forwarded to council with a recommendation for approval. Next item is also from Finance Department. This is ordinance number 2005-03-033, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Urbana, Illinois regarding the schedule of fees, July 1, 2005, to June 30, 2006.
One of the first steps in the annual budget process is a revision of the schedule of fees that the city charges. The city charges has fees for liquor licenses, various other licenses, inspections, permits. And that's a, that's a large number for the city. It's about $1.9 million annually that they charge for those. And typically, local governments have charged the users of those services, the holders of the licenses, to pay, reimburse the city for the costs of providing the service related to those licenses. So each year, we review those. The larger ones, such as liquor license or benefit tax, we, in the past, has been our policy to adjust those each year by the inflationary costs of the expenses that are related, and that's mainly personnel costs that go up each year. The smaller ones, we do that about once every three or four years, to make a large enough increase worthwhile. This year, we're not doing all of them. We're suggesting an increase in the liquor license fees by 3.5% and sewer benefit tax by 3.5%. And a couple of very small, minor changes that, when I was going through it, I saw they had not been changed for a number of years, and they're pretty insignificant. So what we will do is, by law, we're required to place this schedule on file with the city clerk's office, publish a notice in the news gazette telling the public of the changes, and I'll receive any comments that people might have during this time. And then after the 30 days is up, it can be, it can be approved, and I'll put any of those comments that I receive back to you at that time.
Thank you. Are there any questions? If not, a motion would be in order?
I would move to move this to council.
Second.
April 18th.
Yeah. Oh, right.
Just point of clarification, the motion is then to put this on file for the suggestion of Mr. Aldridge, and then see it at least one month from today?
It'd be April 18th would be the next council meeting that could, it could be moved on.
In that case, I think, yes, that was the motion. Is it?
That would be right. Yes, it would be.
Second.
And the second was one. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is forwarded to council on April 18 with a recommendation for approval. Our next item is also from Finance. This relates, it's to ordinance number 2005-03-034, an ordinance of the City of Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois, providing for the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2005, providing the details of such bonds, and for a levy of taxes to pay the principal and interest on such bonds and related matters.
The city has three outstanding debt obligations, $965,000 in our general obligation bonds that are really being paid from TIP 1 and TIP 2 revenues. The first one of those in TIP 1, I think, was done in 1982 and basically built a parking garage. And then on TIP 2, in 1990, did all the other improvements of sidewalks in downtown. These, over the years, refinanced and restructured at least a couple times to take advantage of lower interest rates and to match some payments out with better revenue flow. What I'm suggesting here is merely a refinancing, very similar to what you would do on your home mortgage. I'm not changing the dates that they're due, I'm not changing the principles very much, I'm just doing it to get a lower interest rate and save some costs. The other two, the Tepper note, that's $157,000, is not really subject to any refinancing, since it says right in the note that it's not allowed. Mr. Tepper wanted, he wanted that structured so tax purposes that it couldn't be repaid, he'd have all that income at one time. And the other one, the no payable under the Schnucks Development Agreement, can be refinanced, and Ken Beth and I are looking at that, try to figure out the best way to do that, if we can do that in a non-taxable way, which would save us more money, or if we have to do it in a taxable way. It would still save money in a taxable way, but not nearly as much. So, and so we're gonna be coming back to you in the near future, something on that. What I did was I received proposals from two investment banking firms from Chicago, and then from three local banks. And the best proposal was BC Bank, therefore, that's the two I'm recommending. And by refinancing, the city will save about $103,000 in interest costs and fees over the next year, next eight years. It's an annual savings of about $12,800 and some dollars. On a present value basis, that's about $81,000 that the city will save. And that will be savings to TIP 1 and TIP 2 where the bonds are paid from. With that, Ken Beth is the ordinance, is the council providing assistance in the documents, and he's, of course, has been the counsel for the city's debt issues as long as I've been here, was the original counsel for both the original issues, so.
Before we take any questions, I just have one for you. What is your preference that council do with this tonight? Should we forward this to, to council at the next council meeting? Or do you need time to consider this?
No.
Okay.
This one can be approved at the very next council meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Mr. Hayes?
You're just gonna refinance it to get a lower interest rate, because one of them, you can't pay it off early, right?
Yeah, all we're doing right now is refinancing the first issue, the $965,000. The second one, we are not gonna be able to do. The third one, I know we can do. Right now, we need just a little more time to figure out the best way to do it to get the lowest interest cost that we can.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, a motion would be in order. Ms. Wyman?
I move we send ordinance number 2005-03-034, an ordinance of the City of Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois, providing for the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2005, providing the details of such bonds, and for a levy of taxes to pay the principal and interest on such bonds and related matters to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Ms. General with seconds. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is forwarded to council with a recommendation of approval. Next, thanks, sir. Next, we have from Public Works, this is ordinance number 2005-03-038, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute agreements for the use of right-of-way at 1701 South Fiallo Road. Mr. Gray?
Thank you. This is fairly straightforward here. Pride Oil, who's the owner of the property, has some environmental work going on to take some soil samples, et cetera, to determine extent of what may be contamination, and they'd like to set up some monitoring wells within the Fiallo Road right-of-way just south of Florida Avenue. The gas station is at the southwest corner of Fiallo Road in Florida. And in order for them to have a facility like this in our right-of-way, we need to enter into a license agreement. So this would be for two monitoring wells, and they would be there for, I like the time that it takes before they get final sign-off from the EPA, which could be several years. There is very little impact to the city, financially or otherwise, and we seek your approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gray? Mr. Roberts?
I noticed that there is about three or four, no, one, two, three, four, five wells currently on the site. Is that correct?
That's what their plan shows, yes.
So those wells are proposed, but they don't exist at this time?
Well, they're existing.
They exist.
On private property.
Right. And we're adding the two that are in the street right-of-way?
Yeah. We, the city-
The city's not, but he'd like to put those there.
Correct.
Because he expect, and it's because there's possible contamination in the ground?
They want to try to determine the extent of it, yes.
I see.
Mr. Roberts, anything further?
No, I was just wondering why they were so far from the other five, and I guess it's because they want to know how far the contamination goes.
Yeah, those are decisions that the consultant, Geoken, makes. We don't get into those discussions, so that's their professional opinions as to where they go.
Okay.
Ms. Wyman?
Just one quick question. Is there any visual impact?
No. It would be very similar visually as a water valve box might be on a pavement, a small diameter with a cover plate on it, you know, for traffic to drive over it, but visually, it's flush with the pavement, so there's no impact necessarily.
Thank you.
Ms. General?
I have a question that's general in nature. Does the City of Urbana have any recourse when an individual company or organization contaminates public, public lands?
Well, a recourse, if we would have a, say, a construction project and we had to put a sewer in, for example, if there were extraordinary costs because of contaminated soil, yes, we would have those, those extraordinary costs would be recovered or would be charged to the offending property. We do have a few of those types of agreements in place, in particular, just to the south of Colorado, for example, in Fiallo Road.
If there are no other questions, a motion would be in order?
I move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Ms. Wyman's second, or Ms. Wyman's motion, Ms. General with seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is forwarded. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Now we have some things from Legal. Ordinance number 2005-03-039, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement between the City of Urbana, Illinois, and Local Number 1147 of the International Association of Firefighters for the term beginning July 1, 2004, through June 30, 2007, Contract Section 17, implementing the Illinois Fire Department Promotions Act as amended by agreement of the city and the union. Ms. Holtz?
What a mouthful, isn't it? This is, this is an amendment to the current contract with the Urbana Firefighters Union. It's mandated essentially by the Fire Department Promotions Act. We, I think we passed, when did we pass our firefighters' agreement? About a year, a year and a half ago?
Year ago.
We're, yeah, we're about a year into the current agreement. Shortly before the current agreement was, was entered into by the city and the firefighters' local, state law was passed called the Fire Department Promotions Act, that kinda gets into this arcane area of civil service and the details and minutia of the promotions process. Our contract with the firefighters did actually, in fact, address a lot of aspects of the promotions process. And what the state law does is mandate certain kinds of things, and then says that if the city and the fire union want to, they can change various aspects of it. So we sat down, myself, together with a couple members of the local 1147 union management team, and over the course of some months, negotiated a few changes to it, and then incorporated those changes by merging the contract's promotions language together with the act. Significant changes over what the contract currently provides and that are essentially required by this new state law is that for promotions, there's now what you could call a rule of one plus an opportunity for a passover in making promotions, while under our contract language before, we had a rule of three that allowed us to choose from the top three candidates in a promotional pool for a promotion. It's now amended to a rule of one with an opportunity, under certain circumstances, to pass a particular individual over if there's real reason to think that they wouldn't be able to do the job. And then other, other than that, the process just kinda gets into the details of how tests are administered and proctored and things like that. We made a few changes about proctors and selection of evaluators and, just to keep everybody happy, and I think we've got a pretty good agreement on this. I wasn't particularly fond of the state law, but some things the state legislature gives you, you have to deal with. So basically, where we are at right now is that the union and I have signed off on this as a tentative agreement. The union governing board took this tentative agreement to the union already. This happened about a week or so ago, and the union ratified the agreement as it stands right now. So my request to you is to authorize Mayor Sathwaite to sign off on this agreement, and this would then amend the contract. We would go back and sign a new version of the current contract with these changes in it, and then, and then we would be finished with the fire contract issues until the next round of negotiations, which I think would be-
Starting in eighteen months.
Starting in a year and a half. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for city attorney? If there are none, then a motion would be in order?
I move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Mr. Hayes moved, I believe, Ms. General with second, and is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is forwarded to council with a recommendation for approval. Next, we have ordinance number 2005-03-040, an ordinance amending Chapter 3, alcoholic liquors of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Urbana, to add provisions granting the liquor commissioner authority to restrict alcohol sales during potential periods of civil unrest or celebratory riots. Go Illini.
That's really what this is, what this is about. This comes largely from, from a similar ordinance that's proposed for the City of Champaign. I think the City of Champaign Police Department, the Urbana Police Department, and the University of Illinois Police Department are all doing a very good job of trying to anticipate potential problems and of giving, giving the city's tools for making sure that things don't get out of hand. So essentially, what this does is authorize the liquor commissioner, and by state law, the liquor commissioner of a municipality is the mayor or president of a village, authorizes the liquor commissioner to impose certain additional restrictions on the sale of alcohol for a period of up to, I believe it's 48 hours, in connection with an anticipated public celebration of some sort or other. Basically, the kinds of restrictions that could be imposed, let me take a moment to For license holders who, who sell just for on-premises consumption of alcohol, in other words, bars and pubs, the additional restrictions could be hours and days of operation, size of drinks, and restrictions prohibiting serving drinks in glass or metal containers. The idea being, if things get out of hand with celebration, the glass bottles and cans and whatever become some pretty serious projectiles. For places that, license holders that sell for off-premises consumption, i.e. grocery stores and fast food marts and whatever, the restrictions could be, again, hours and days of operation, and restrictions on the size of containers of glass or metal. Interestingly, the way it seems to be most useful is to restrict, in those circumstances, containers to containers of one liter or more in volume, so actually requiring, if they're in glass or metal containers, for them to be larger. The idea being that if it's smaller bottles and cans, and those things are more readily concealed and carried around, and are more likely to become projectiles in a, in some kind of a celebration. There are a couple things in our ordinance that are a little bit different than what Champaign has. Champaign, and really, that has to do more with the fact that our liquor license and our liquor licensing provisions are different. Champaign has K, i.e. keg licenses. They also have some kind of a form called a parental responsibility or adult responsibility form. Urbana's ordinances don't have anything like this, and so where Champaign's version had those kinds of things in it, I deleted those out. One other difference between ours and Champaign's is that there refers to, or called it, an emergency authority. I thought it really is kinda better to phrase it semantically as a, as a temporary preventative authority, because we're trying to prevent an emergency from happening in the first place. There are certain notice requirements that would be required of the liquor commissioner. If it's by personal service, the liquor commissioner would have to give notice to each of the license holders at least 24 hours in advance of these new restrictions. If it's by mail or some similar method, the notice would be something like three days. Chief Adair, you think I've covered everything there that needs to be covered?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. General?
It looks good. The only thing that I think is missing is just an understanding of what a scenario would look like. So we're gonna have a Illini basketball game. We, you know, it's the Big Ten champs or whatever it is. What's the scenario? What is an example of something that we would put in place, the liquor commissioner would put in place at that time, just so we have a picture of what it looks like?
Well, the way we've been envisioning it, and just an example, if a game is on, say, we're in the Final Four, and we've got a game on Saturday that starts at 2:00, in conjunction with Champaign, we might say, no tavern's gonna sell any drink in a glass or metal container, you have to use plastic. And so it could go out in an order which would be, have to go out on Friday, at least 24 hours in advance, saying that no licensee for on-premise consumption in any given state of geographic area will serve anything other than a plastic cup. And that from, you know, say, an hour before the game, starting at 1:00 in the afternoon, and, you know, the hallway don't close at night.
So is it mostly the mechanism of, it's mostly the cups versus glass, or would you imagine there would be situations in which you would not permit alcohol sales?
Well, I think that would, you know, obviously, that's gonna have to be something we discuss and see how it goes as the tournament moves along. You know, nobody's really anticipating that anything would happen unless we reach the Final Four and the final game. Final Four and the final game. But we would be able to have some indication, you know, how much celebration there's going to be, how responsible the crowd is, and so forth. Now, you know, again, this is not, as Steve says, it's not emergency powers, and so that anything we have to do, we'd have to give at least 24 hours' notice. But if there is a celebration ongoing, then we can use our existing emergency powers to curtail the sale of alcohol. It's going to be hard, you know, to anticipate 24 hours or more in advance, but, you know, some of the things that we've been considering are, you know, no sales in cans or glass the day of a big game.
Thank you. Ms. Patton, I think was next.
I'm just wondering about the logistics. If the big games are April 2nd and April 4th, does this 48-hour window hurt us because it would be from before game time on Saturday, the 2nd, until well into the evening on the 4th? That we would, I mean, actually it would be two different times. I guess we'd want it for Saturday and for Monday, so would that be okay? Because you exercise the right, you give the notice once for Saturday and then again for Monday? Is that the idea?
Yes. That's the intent.
And generally, you know, with these things, it's not going to be effective to notify by mail. We're probably going to decide, you know, 24 hours in advance or 30 hours in advance and personally notify the establishments that are affected.
Is that the time period we're looking at, the April 2nd and 4th? Are we concerned about anything before then?
Well, to a lesser degree, but the biggie is the Final Four.
Final Four. But there's the week 16 or something the week before?
We are staffing accordingly for those.
Yeah, well, it's something that we monitor all the time, you know, having the chance that we would have been 30-0, which we weren't. Why? You know, we were gearing up for any kind of celebration in case we would have won, you know, 30 games in a row without a loss, and, you know, Big Ten championship and so forth. I mean, so virtually every game, we're watching it and see what kind of response is necessary, and you try to gauge the planning for the next time based on what's happened the previous game.
Okay.
Mr. Hayes?
Some people like Heineken's, and Heineken's only comes in the bottle. Okay? So two scenarios. Number one, that means if somebody buys Heineken's in the bar, then the bartender's going to have to take the top off and pour it in a cap and plastic cup.
If we move to that mode, that would be correct.
So what about in grocery stores? Are you going to use the same scenario when certain types of alcoholic beverages only comes in the bottle?
If the grocery store is included in the affected area, they would be limited to the much larger volume, the liter-type containers of glass, or they would not be allowed to sell them. The idea is, as the mayor said, if the supermarket is in the affected area, it's the six-pack of glass or metal, those cans and bottles, those are the ones that our information indicates have traditionally been used as missiles. And a bottle of beer or can can be a legal object if it strikes you in the head. We have evidence, Michigan State in there, that there was a person paralyzed as a result of being struck with one. So it's for that reason, we landed these smaller containers than require a larger, liter size, a larger, most people can't throw government's far.
That should be respected for a certain area, it would be all over the city.
Right. I mean, it allows us to identify a geographic area, and, you know, obviously where most of the celebration is going to be is on campus, you know, it is the U of I, and so anticipate that most of the celebration is going to occur in that area. But geographic area can be set so that it prevents a widespread celebration that's out of control and just, you know, on a day-by-day basis based on what the performance has been throughout the tournament.
Mr. Roberts?
I guess the intent of this ordinance is sort of specific in people's minds, but if we actually have this ordinance on the books, isn't this an ongoing ordinance? This doesn't have a time, there's not a timeframe in which this ordinance is in place and then it's going to expire. This is going to be a permanent ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, that's the intent.
All right. And, I mean, there could be a time in the future perhaps that, you know, especially a rowdy graduation weekend or the end of rush week, or, I mean, are we going to be applying this ordinance to a lot of different kinds of uses in the future depending on how we feel? Or is this, I mean, what's, I'm wondering what, it's kind of a really openly worded ordinance in some ways as far as, you know, I don't know if there would be an opportunity or an instance in the future where one would be tempted to bring it out again under maybe less daunting conditions because it's on the books. I was just wondering about that.
Well, the intent is, yes, it could be brought out if a situation, we became aware of a situation that potentially could become an unsafe gathering, we could use it. That's without having to wait until it reached such a devastating level that I would have to petition the mayor to declare an emergency.
I guess I'm kind of, what I'm wondering is like what the potential riot control, potential this is in the city and, you know, depending upon our use, which, you know, we have seemingly a benign use at this point, but, you know, it's an ordinance that we're adopting based on future worry.
Yes. What?
I think, you know, it's generally geared towards major athletic events at the university. You know, where we've seen it in the past and around the Big Ten and other communities is for a big game, you know, like winning the NCAA or Ohio State Michigan game's always a big game, and there have been celebratory violence at Ohio State after that game. You know, it could also be something like, if you're familiar with Southern Illinois, where they've had the Halloween party for years and years and years, and, you know, it got big enough after quite a while that it became a celebratory riot. And so it could be used for a situation like that as well. But it's generally worded for, as it says here, University of Illinois participation in a noteworthy athletic event.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any additional questions? I'd just like to make the comment that I think I've seen this work well in Carbondale, where they had a canned beer, although I believe there it was citywide and it did lead to some strange anomalies like, you know, expensive restaurants serving wine in plastic cups 24 hours before the game and things like that. I think people took it with a, in the proper spirit, and I think it really probably did help prevent some injuries and prevent some things from escalating into worse situations. So I think we can trust the mayor and future mayors, liquor commissioners to apply this sensibly, and I think it's a good thing. Ms. Chandler?
I move to council with a recommendation for approval. And I would note that I've actually been hit by a full can of beer before, and it doesn't feel good, so I understand where this is coming from.
Thank you. And a second from Ms. Wyman? I heard a second from down there somewhere.
Actually, it was Ms. Pat.
Oh, Ms. Pat with a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chief. Next, we have from Community Development, ordinance number 2005-03-032, an ordinance approving and adopting a supplement and amendment to the redevelopment plan and related redevelopment projects for the downtown Urbana tax increment redevelopment project area two.
Okay, we're bringing this to you again. We've talked about this a bit before. Of course, we had the public, I gave you some of the background of it way back in December when we were trying to set the time and date for the public hearing, and that's part of the process that we have to go through with this plan amendment adoption process. And of course, I gave you a presentation last month, kind of outlining the purpose of the plan and some of the financial reasons that we want to do this. And now, this is, we've finally gotten through the process. We've held the JRB meeting, the Joint Review Board meeting, back on February 7th. They did suggest a few changes, and I included those changes in the new copy that I sent you, or that I handed out to you, was it, last week? And most of those have to do with the budget, most notably Tables 3 through 5. And before, when we talked with the JRB, especially Joanne Chester, she thought that some of our EAV projections were a little bit too optimistic. We were looking at 5% increase yearly. She said that historically it's kind of been between more like 3% and 3.5%. So I changed that in the projections to 3.25% yearly increase, not including any additional EAV from new projects. And so that brought it down to about $35 million projected tax increment by the end of the expiration of the TIF in 2022, which is what it would be if extended this 12 years with this adoption of the plan amendment. And also, we decided that instead of basing our budgets for improvements and assistance, just the increment from new projects, that it made sense to use the entire tax increment. We'd be able to accomplish a lot more, and so we bumped up a lot of those numbers. And now we're projecting a redevelopment project budget of approximately $28 million with which, assuming that all of the projects that we have outlined could be accomplished in that additional 12 years. So with that said, the other changes were mostly just textual, just trying to clear up what the intent of the plan is, and changed one map, Figure 7, just to include a few more projects in that. Council's been supportive of downtown initiatives in the past, of course, the Build Downtown, which was, Danielle had a lot to do with, and our downtown strategic plan, which I know that the mayor and the council have been very supportive of. So this, along with TIF 1, which we, plan amendment which we had adopted last year, these kind of go hand in hand, and it'll be really beneficial to extend this tip because we'll be able to accomplish a lot more of what's in the downtown strategic plan and the original TIF plan, which goes way back to 1986. You know, there's been some things accomplished in that plan, but there's still a lot more to do, and things have changed since then, and now there's a lot more opportunities now. So with that, I'm recommending approval of this, the ordinance adopting this amendment to the tax increment finance district number two. So if there's any questions?
Questions, Ms. Chandler?
This is great. I think that we need to move forward with this, and I know it's a little bit, taking a little bit of time to put it together, and I appreciate your efforts. Under this, with the amendment, would city council in the future be able to provide increased grants or loans to small businesses similar to what Champaign has done? They were larger grants and loans, but contributing funds to a particular bar or cafe or boutique or something? Or does it, or are they site-specific? I know that looking at Figure 7, there are 12, 13 plans. One is general historic building rehabs, and the rest have, are location-specific. Are there other things that we can do that aren't location-specific like those grants and loans?
Oh, sure. We upped the budget fairly significantly in those, and we tried to make the plan, the potential projects, as broad as possible to account for, you know, to have some flexibility in how we use the money. So, yeah, I mean, we would just have to, you know, change our, you know, we would just take a change to our facility loan program. Of course, we also already do development agreements for specific projects that would be especially beneficial to the city or that would generate significant amount of increment. So, you know, all of those things are possible.
Thanks.
I just have one question. Could you identify the specific properties that were added in the most recent round of changes?
Properties that were added?
There are no properties added.
Yeah, the boundaries wouldn't change at all.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. I thought you said it had been amended to include new properties, just new projects.
New projects.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Are there any further questions? If not, a motion would be in order, Mr.?
Just as a matter of disclosure, the other, in addition to all the reasons that Ryan has put forward to approve the plan, we also have several development agreements that are contingent on this. Stratford, Lincoln Square, and Five Points are all contingent upon the council passing this.
Thank you. The motion will be in order, and I guess I would ask that the motion indicate that we are asking that this be approved as drafted and with changes requested by the Joint Review Board? Is that what you're asking for?
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. Wyman?
I move that we send ordinance number 2005-03-032, an ordinance approving and adopting a supplement and amendment to the redevelopment plan and related redevelopment projects for the downtown Urbana tax increment redevelopment project area two, along with the, or that include the recommendations by the Joint Review Board to council with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Wyman.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pat. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item, also from CD, is ordinance number 2005-03-035, an ordinance approving modifications to the City of Urbana and Urbana/Champaign/Champaign County Home Consortium Fiscal Year 2003-2004 Annual Action Plan and Fiscal Year 2004-2005 Annual Action Plan.
Thank you. A couple of amendments, see in the memo, if you will, I'll just go through these three. The first is concerning family service of Champaign County. We budgeted funds in the 0405 Annual Action Plan, and family services indicated they desire an amendment to their project, basically changing the scope from ADA improvements to the restroom facilities to improvements to their window systems in their facility there. Shell Vouch is with us this evening. If there's particular questions about the project, basically the funding remains the same and the scope of work changes, and that's evidenced on the next page with the underline and strikeout. The other amendment concerns our transitional housing program. I note in the memo that our budget for this program's been extremely tight as it lies within the public service cap, and our community development block grant program limits us to 15% of the grant award. We've got social service and our cleanup and this transitional housing program. We realized a pretty good savings through our neighborhood cleanup program this year, or was our first installment of it, and we'd like to use some of the savings to address some deferred maintenance items in our transitional housing units. We have three of those that we own and two from, they're leased to us by Carl. The last amendment concerns a project that was in the 0304 Annual Action Plan, a project with one of our neighborhood groups, United Citizens and Neighbors. The text in that annual action plan indicated if the project wouldn't go forward, it would move the funding to our owner-occupied rehab program. We spoke with UCAN, if you will, and they revisited the item one more time and indicated that right now they're just not positioned to engage the program. So those are the three amendments, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Roberts?
I was just wondering, the first, the home consortium, the number one in which the money that was budgeted to rehabilitate the bathrooms to make them accessible, there wasn't enough fund... wasn't enough funds just to complete the project? Is that the situation?
I think as Family Services correspondence indicates, that it was the remainder of funds, the balance, the match, if you will, that, that they had been counting on didn't materialize for them. And so the entirety of the project funding wasn't, wasn't enough. You're right.
And so what's wrong with the windows in these facilities? What specific problem are they?
They're very dated, very dated and not energy efficient. And, and I think when we started with Family Services, we did some, some, a project previously paid for some A&E services. Basically, they have a wishlist, if you will, of improvements that are required for their facility, and this would just be, rather than taking off this one, we would, we'd take the other one that we can collectively afford.
Okay, I understand.
Further questions? If not, we entertain a motion. Ms. Pat?
Thank you. I move to send this ordinance to city council with a recommendation for approval with one change, and that is for the reprogramming of the $28,000 of money from UCAN to go to the new construction of transitional housing at 504 East Church Street for Center for Women in Transition, rather than going into owner-occupied housing rehab program.
Second.
Would you like to, will we do that as a, as a single motion, or would you prefer to do that as a motion and amendment?
Well, it's up to you.
Why don't we ask for a motion on the main, on the main?
Okay. I move to send to council the recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I move to amend the motion to make the change, or reprogramming the $28,000 from UCAN to Center for Women in Transition.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion with regard to the amendment? Does everyone understand what that is? Ms. Wyman?
Yeah, as Mr. Gruy mentioned, that, that money originally was programmed for United Citizens and Neighbor Property Acquisition, Renovation, and Resale. I, I was able to speak with a representative from UCAN over the weekend, and they did indicate to me, as Mr. Gruy mentioned, they indicated to him that they were not going to go forward this year, but I do hope that council members who are continuing and staff for next year will, will note that I think that UCAN is interested in pursuing this project next year, and I hope that, because it's such, I think it's a good program, that this issue and this program that council has supported in the past will, will be supported by council next year when they're ready to go forward with this again. Thank you.
Ms. Pat?
Thank you. And just to explain what the other half of this, you might recall, two weeks ago, when we had lots of public input, we, we did get a memo explaining to us that a HUD grant that for, I don't know how many years, more than five, and maybe as many as 10, that has funded Center for Women in Transition, a Women's Fund, and Salvation Army for their transitional housing for women and children, was not funded this year, and so there's a funding gap of, I guess it's a seven-month period because the funding period might change, but $120,468 for Center for Women in Transition, $60,083 for Women's Fund, I'm sorry, that's the total. Center for Women in Transition, $60,083, a Women's Fund, $36,278, and Salvation Army, $24,107. Home funds cannot be used for operating expenses, but home funds can be used for new construction, and of these three agencies, one of them has just started a new construction project. So this would be one way of helping them make up that, in the case of Center for Women in Transition, a $60,000 hole that's just been created in their budget. This would fill $28,000 of it, and that's, I, I think that's the, the highest priority for using surprise money, and that's why I'm suggesting it.
Any additional comments? I guess I'd like to speak to the amendment. I second what Ms. Wyman said. I think UCAN has been an organization that has, you know, clearly done a lot of good in the community and the neighborhood, and I would certainly not like to think that this was an indication that we were not interested in funding them in the future. So I think this recognizes that they are maybe behind where they wanted to be in terms of their ability to use the funds, but I don't think it sends any statement as to the worthiness of that organization to receive funds in the future, and I would also hope that staff would consider those requests. Likewise, I think the owner-occupied rehab program's very successful, and is something that is obviously worthy of, of funding, but I agree that we perhaps at this point have a more dire need, and I'd be supportive of the amendment. Ms. Chen?
I just have a question, which is that I've looked at this a couple of times, and actually this time, I realized that the numbers don't add up. So we saved a certain amount on neighborhood cleanup, let's say 12 grand or so, but we're not increasing transitional housing by 12 grand. We're only increasing it by six and a half grand, let's just say roughly. And we see United Citizens, United Citizens and Neighbors, we have a, basically a savings, so to speak, of $28,000, and we're talking about moving back to Center for Women in Transition. So it seems like there's extra money in addition to what we're talking about that's here, that hasn't, that we're not allocating at this time, at which point we, that's not correct? So if you take the $8,300 from the neighborhood cleanup, and you, you subtract that from $21,000, which is what we originally had allocated, that comes to a different number than what we've increased transitional housing by.
I think one of, one of the matters is we are retaining a sum of money in this line item, the neighborhood cleanup, the $83,000. We've spent three, and we want to keep another five for the spring cleanup that'll be here May 14th. So that's kind of that remainder, if you will, that's really not spoken to per se.
But it, it doesn't total more than $8,300, correct?
Right, it, it should be right there.
So, so if you take $21,000 minus $8,300, that's not the same, that's a larger number than the number by which we're increasing transitional housing?
Ms. Pat?
Yeah, I think I see this, in the description in the memo, it says $15,000 for neighborhood cleanup, and you subtract the $8,300 from $15,000, that's where you get the $6,700. But in the actual action plan, it originally had $21,000, and $6,000 that it was CD'S sync fund.
Exactly.
So are you, so the proposals for the $6,000 to go back into the sync fund, right?
Yes.
That's, that's why, because that wasn't, that's not, that wasn't actual home, or that, and that's a separate fund, because there have to, there has to be match for different programs in here.
Oh, for?
So the proposal matches came out, so it would go back in there.
So the, just to understand, the sync fund has particular requirements attached to it that would keep us from allocating that, that fund also to the Center for Women in Transition?
It actually has fewer requirements.
Well, I think, well, we were, it was a contingency, if you will, because we, we kept the other programming items in that social service cap, the same as last year, even though we had reductions. So the CD'S sync fund was simply a marker indicating that should we exceed our allocation for cleanup, we'd have a backup. We were hoping never to use it. All it was, was, well, just a backup that we hope we never had to use.
The CD'S sync fund was established 20 years ago, and we put general fund money into a separate fund for CDBG, because back then, we had to file all of our requests for revenue, or monies from HUD in paper, and now it's all electronically done, but we, we had sometimes significant delays in the payments. Likewise, there were certain programs that required matches of the general fund for programs, and so we've always tried to keep, and it's really an unrestricted account. It is, there is no federal restrictions on that account. So we've tried to keep that as, in, in the event that we, we don't really have the shortfall so much anymore, but in the event that we need it for either a special project or a match. So, I mean, technically, the council could spend it on whatever they wanted to. It's not restricted at all. I'm not suggesting that you do that.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, we can, I guess, take a vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If the amendment carries, is there any further discussion on the main motion? In that case, with regard to the main motion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That goes to council with a recommendation of approval. Thanks, thanks, Rob. Next, we have from CD, ordinance number 2005-03-036, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement for 1901 South High Cross Road with Wendell, Inc.
This agreement is for the 20.76 acre parcel at 1901 South High Cross, which is occupied currently by the Wendells Restaurant and Sports Complex. The owner is desirous of making improvements to the property to promote its use more as a sit-down restaurant. It would continue to have alcohol sales, however, so I wanted to clarify, clarify that from random, and it would convert their previously existing dance hall space into additional restaurant space. The other change with the, probably read about in the newspaper, is a reduction of outdoor events, and we feel that this is a big breakthrough in terms of some of the land use conflicts that have occurred between this operation and surrounding residential uses. So this will be, become an operation that will be more compatible with those residential uses, and would involve more of a restaurant, rather than the, some of the noisy events that have occurred there in the past. Back in '93, there was an annexation agreement entered into for a larger parcel, including this 20-some acre parcel, plus an additional 56 acres to the north. And that's currently the Deener Tract, which is Florida Avenue Extended, as well as a remainder piece, which is not owned, it's owned by a different party, not the TK Wendells party. So what we're doing here is addressing an annexation agreement that supersedes the previous annexation agreement, simply for the 20 acres that were not annexed back in '93. The remainder was annexed, so if you look at a zoning map or a corporate limits map, TK Wendells is sort of like a missing tooth in our boundaries, our eastern boundary along High Cross Road. So it was never annexed in, and part of that was the operations that they held under Champagne County with special events licenses, et cetera. So the history, of course, has been land use concerns, complaints by city residents in Stone Creek about some of the events that have been held, some of the lighting, late-night lighting for the ball fields. One result has been planting of a significant berm at the Stone Creek Golf Course to kind of shield and, and buffer some of those operations. Looking at the annexation agreement, major provisions are rezoning. It's a, it's a transition zone, basically, so this did not require a planning commission action. It would go from the counties before general business to the cities be three general business. Already, the owner has agreed to rebuilding codes and to obtain city codes for their expansion, which they've already done. They're already working on the restaurant. As far as the existing site improvements, those are largely prepared, consistent with county requirements, zoning requirements, and we would allow those in the annexation agreement to remain in their current condition with some maintenance. And really, what we're talking about is an oil and ship parking lot, so we would not be requiring that to be paved. It's an extensive park, extensive parking area. But if, at some point in the future, they did wish to expand or upgrade, we would ask at that time that that be done to city standards. They also have a freestanding sign that we would allow to remain. Very important provision in the annexation agreement, and one that I'm sure Stone Creek residents are very happy about, will be a limitation on outdoor amusement events, which are defined as any gathering of 50 or more persons in the outdoor portions of the site to no more than two per calendar year, and only with the permission of the Urbana Police Chief and Operations Supervisor. So there'd be a process for these events, and explicitly to not allow events such as tractor pulls, demolition derbies, or similar events that involve the excessive whetting of motors or noise impacts. And also additional provision that the exterior lighting be extinguished at 11:00 p.m. each evening. No baseball games can last a while, so that would allow at least one game, unless there's some explicit permission as part of those two events per year. Those would have to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. As a financial incentive, there's provisions for rebate of the annex versus unannex real estate taxes for a period of up to four years. That would be approximately $3,000 per year, $12,000 total. Would also have to create a Class A liquor license. They have that currently in the county, but this agreement would create another one so they could continue with their liquor sales as part of the restaurant. And benefits are really to begin to get a handle on some of the land use compatibility issues, to restrict these outdoor events to portions that are further to the east from the residential areas, to assist the owner with recreating the operation in a more residential-friendly type of venue. And a lot of benefits to the property in terms of improved police and fire protection. It's an urban use in an urban area, and really does need the kinds of protection that our, our fire department and police department can provide, as well as zoning enforcement for any complaints that may arise in the building safety reviews that we can also offer in the city, and there's benefit to the owner as well. There's pretty extensive hearing notice provisions that have been met for the hearing that was held earlier this evening in the annexation agreement, and similarly for the intended annexation. This is, you know, notifying, notifying the township, the Philo Fire Protection District. Looking at our comprehensive plan, here we're citing three comprehensive plans, and pretty soon, hopefully, we'll just have the 2005 update, but it does meet some of those proposed policies about pursuing annexation strategies that promote orderly development and annexing unincorporated areas that have been previously developed at urban densities. The fiscal impacts, including all revenue sources, would be on the order of about $30,000 per year benefit to the city. I've already talked about the, the rebate would be about $3,000. And property taxes would total about, total property taxes would total about $25,000 per year. I'm looking through the ordinance, I did note one typo in Section 1V, and that should be reversed, those two words. And also, in looking at the annexation agreement, we're trying to distinguish between the larger site that had a previous agreement, and that should be designated with the tract with a small T, and that's the Exhibit A, and then the subject tract, we're trying to identify with a capital T. And I think there's maybe a few of those that were missed. Also on Exhibit D, it might be wise to, that's a site plan of the special event area, it's basically just an outline on the aerial photo. I'm looking at that again this evening, it may be wise to just square that off in the northeast, so, you know, if they did have some activities that spilled out into their parking lot, that would be permissible, but, you know, really, if you look at this, we're, we're maintaining that extensive buffer on the west side of the property, which is closest to the residences in, in Stone Creek. I'll also note that there's, it's going to be more and more residential development in the direct vicinity, so the timing to restrict the operations at this site is good. There's interest in the properties directly south, and as well as Stone Creek building out to the west, and then there's also interest in residential development to the north, not so much on the remainder piece, but a little further north on the Deener Tract. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Chen?
They're not going to need a special use or a, a special events permit to hold ball games, are they?
No.
Okay, so they can play, they can play games, and soccer ball, softball, et cetera. Okay.
Any other questions? The motion would be in order.
I'd like to send both items 13 and 14 to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Not in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, items 13 and 14, which I'll read for the sake of completeness, 14 is ordinance number 2005-03-037, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the City of Urbana, approximately 20.76 acres located at 1901 South High Cross Road. Brings us to item 15, Resolution Number 2005-03-005R, Resolution to endorse the Champagne Urbanized Area Transportation Study Long Range Transportation Plan 2025.
I think we're at a point where we're going to try to answer questions. I know we started into this discussion at our last meeting, and time ran out, and maybe just to recap, there's a memo here that pretty much talks about what has transpired since KUAT's staff members made a presentation last fall to the committee, and we've had some subsequent meetings, public information meetings, which have translated into this into this document here for the Long Range Transportation Plan. And this is not a requirement, but we're looking for an endorsement of this plan. There's been a lot of hard work. I think it's a good picture of Champaign-Urbana-Savoy area transportation planning in the future here, and there are, every five years, there are updates. I think this plan has taken a significant shift in its goals and objectives from past plans, and I think it's mirroring what I think our ideals and goals are, and consistent with the cop plan that you'll be reviewing here in the coming weeks. But I think there were some questions with respect to High Cross Road, and we'll try to answer those questions.
Thank you. Mrs. General.
I have a couple of questions. Generally, I think it looks good. There are just a few things. First off, I want to understand what our options are today. You mentioned that it's not required that it have our endorsement. On the other hand, I know that it's been said that this is what, what the state sees in terms of our priorities, and so it's important that they have, they have our priorities in place so that when they're looking to do a lot of funding, they know what our priorities are. Do we, are our options today, or I guess next Monday, thumbs up or thumbs down? Or are we able to make revisions to this document at this late hour?
This document, it basically was approved by the technical committee and the policy committee, so literally, this is what the federal government will see. All the input opportunities have taken place.
You remember, KUAT staff came here when the report was in a draft form, and there were comments from council that have been incorporated, and I think that was a public review period, then it was adopted by KUAT and RPC, so the state and federal requirements have been fulfilled. What we're doing, the suggestion of KUAT, and it's not a requirement, is just following up with a policy endorsement. I'm just underlining that this is something that the city accepts. And so I think the choice would be either to undertake that endorsement action or not. It could be a problem to not endorse what's already been adopted, may put us in a difficult position, but you're certainly free to either positively endorse it or just not take any action on it.
Would it be appropriate to endorse it but provide additional guidance? I mean, I think we could, we should certainly be in a position where if we're going on record as, as making an endorsement of this, as saying that, you know, we endorse it and have the following concerns or have the following...
Qualifications for the endorsement would, would be probably more relevant at this point. And then, of course, we can follow up with our comprehensive plan. So the city could certainly endorse it with reservations or, you know, endorse X section, but not that section. That's also a possibility.
My concern, and if the council indulged me for a minute here, is I, I know that there's been considerable discussion about the North High Cross Road corridor, and I think, to some extent, the comprehensive, the draft of the comprehensive plan does differ a bit from the study that you have before you, in the sense that the comprehensive plan, I think, makes it clear that interest in the potential of a High Cross Road interstate connection is to serve High Cross Road south of Interstate 74. Include, there's language in the comprehensive plan to that effect, whereas in the KUAT study, there's an implication that there is still this interest in this, I don't think you're still calling it a ring road concept, but whatever they're calling it, the notion of creating a, completing this circuit around the northeast corner. And I would certainly, you know, from my standpoint, I am not particularly supportive of that. I think that's a, something that maybe is included in the plan for the sake, in the KUAT's plan for the sake of completeness, but that I'm not sure would stand up to any kind of a cost-benefit analysis, as opposed to trying to look at improvements down that corridor to the south of the interstate.
Those concerns were raised earlier on by council. As a result of that, and the fact that we were still underway with our Route 130 corridor plan, the preferred alternative clouds up that area. So north of the interstate, there's no alternative designation shown for High Cross Road. I guess the difference between this preferred alternative, which clouds up the area and refers to the High Cross Road study, and the comprehensive plan is we've had the benefit of three additional months and, you know, additional public workshops, and we have a clearer vision for the area as well as the land use work. I would expect our comprehensive plan would inform the High Cross Road corridor plan, which in turn clarifies what's been clouded in the LRT piece, so it actually could take a full circle.
I mean, frankly, I don't want to be negative here, but I think the whole High Cross Road corridor study's a waste of time. I think to the extent that we can look at improvement south of the interstate, it's great, but I think this notion of, you know, providing a better way to get from the intersection of I-74 and High Cross Road to the intersection of I-74 and Airport Road, or TR-151, or whatever it ends up being, other than Interstate 74 and US-45, is probably not something that we'd need to be investing any expenditure in.
And we, we're actually holding off on the High Cross Road. We are the client for High Cross Road, so we're in charge of this, even though it's contracted out to RPC. We've asked them to hold out on, hold off on that effort until we complete our comprehensive plan. So the goal would be to have the three documents be consistent, and their initial indications were from KUAT staff were for these connections, and feedback we're getting, even though they're midstream in the project, feedback we've gotten in our comprehensive plan aren't supporting that so far. North of 74, south of 74, you know, there's a whole other part to the corridor that, that we are looking for guidance on access control and proper cross-section. So it would be good to, north of 74, obtain guidance in the corridor plan for how can we, are there minimal levels of improvements to High Cross Road that can retain the rural character but improve traffic safety? And that remains to be seen, but in terms of this current document, that is an area that just says it's understudy, so.
I wonder if it'd be appropriate to offer an endorsement that was somehow qualified along the lines of an endorsement to the extent that the transportation study is consistent with the Urbana Comprehensive Plan? Because I think we want clearly to be recognized that the Urbana Comprehensive Plan, which I think maybe doesn't quite say what I would like to say about the North High Cross Road corridor, but says what I would like to say better than the KUAT's plan says. I wouldn't want to ask council to offer endorsement of something that wasn't consistent with the comprehensive plan, to the extent that what's proposed in the, in the transportation study, which obviously is significantly more voluminous than the comprehensive plan, to the extent that that's comprehensive or consistent with the comprehensive plan, I would be happy to support an endorsement of it. And would that, would you believe that that would be appropriate to offer an endorsement to the extent that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan?
And you might even say, you know, particularly with respect to that particular segment, that's of concern. But that, to me, that would be a very appropriate proviso to make to the endorsement, given the status of these three different documents, the timing, it's just been awkward, they were concurrent, and then this one got done first, then we'll do the comprehensive plan, and council, of course, will have opportunities to make those modifications, then we'll get back to the High Cross Plan. And perhaps some of the reason for undertaking that plan will have been, gone away in the meanwhile, but still be it.
Thank you. And can somebody tell KUATs to count the number of Amtrak departures in and out of Champaign? I've brought this up a couple of times, and they still have it wrong. Did they ever fix that?
Yeah. No, it's two.
Is it wrong?
It's wrong in the, it's wrong in the plan.
I was interested.
It isn't?
No.
Okay. They did correct it.
The plan is correct.
Okay. At one point, they were saying that the Illini service ran twice a day in each direction, and in fact, it only runs...
And it does.
It does not. I'm sorry. I can talk to you about this later, since it's not going to affect our endorsement, but it is a...
I didn't do the verification, they did, and they follow up on your comment.
They did, okay. And they, they believe the language is now correct, or that it was correct to begin with?
It was correct to begin with.
Okay. We'll talk about it later.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is the November plan. This is not what Mr. Gray has before him, which probably has some differences, but that's the latest of what I have, and then I have a digital copy of that, which is kind of a monster to move through. I have a question. Mr. Ellis?
General.
I want to have this discussion around the comprehensive plan, but I might as well ask my questions now because it allows us to have, to start the conversation as a council. But the, regarding the interchange at I-74 and I-130, a couple of things that I want to make clear from the beginning is, one, I support our comprehensive plan's intentions to make I-130 and I-150 a regional business attraction. Second, I'm open to the concept of an interchange being extended at this location. The things that have, but here's the issue, I haven't gotten anyone to actually give me a good argument for why, of all the things that we need to, to get IDOT to spend money on, or we need to spend money on, I believe in this case, it would be IDOT's money and not ours, why we would consider that a priority over some of the other things that we're looking at. In particular, it's not clear to me from, at first, I thought it might be Walmart and other related retail that was driving the interchange, but in talking to the state about this, that doesn't seem to be the case. So what is driving the interchange at that location? What is the public benefit of an interchange at that location? What are the kinds of activities that we're trying to promote there with a change in, in the interchange? Because as it currently is, although certainly an argument could be made that it's not incredibly usable, meaning you can use it, but it's not easy to use. You have to kind of know to go west before going east, and in that way, there's an issue there. And I also know there's a congestion problem, according to this plan, at the location of University, where kind of University jogs to the south. But I guess my question, but, but the way it's, the way it is now, if our goal is to keep traffic and development to the south of the, of the interstate, not to the north, the way it's developed seems to be actually the best way to do it, and it's the cheapest alternative because it doesn't mean changing anything. And so I want to hear the argument for why we would consider this to be a priority in terms of the state funds that are coming to us, and what is it that we're hoping to prompt with that interchange?
And I'm hearing in your question, why is it a priority over? Is there some other projects that you're thinking of, or?
Well, for example, I, I see Olympian Drive as being a very high priority for our community in terms of industrial corporate office park and office park development, and I think it should be, I, I don't, I don't know where other council members stand on this, but in terms of funding priorities from the state, I would consider that very high priority. I would consider the extension of the improvements at Windsor Road and High Cross Road, the, the extensions of roads, the various roads east to High, or, I, I call it all High Cross Road, but, you know, one, the extensions of all the roads to, to I-130, and potentially improvements at Curtis Road also seem to be really high priority for our community. So I'm trying to understand why it is that we consider this to be a priority such that we would put it in a plan that the state would look at and say, okay, this is the priorities that this community has, and let's figure out which ones we want to fund.
Well, I think one reaction is, is that I think, if you want to look at Florida Avenue Extension to High Cross Road, Washington Street improvements to High Cross Road, Olympian Drive, construction to US-45 from, you know, in Champaign, those are, you know, very high projects, too. The difference is, is that those particular projects are largely funded with local dollars, you know, somewhat leveraged with federal dollars in the Olympian situation. The Florida Avenue Extension, Washington Street Extension are largely going to be local dollars, maybe some developer-type dollars, but that's about it. So, whereas the interchange will be largely federal dollars, you know, ninety, eighty, ninety percent federal dollars, very small dollars would be Urbana dollars. And dependent on the situation, it may be very minimal dollars if we were able to get this extension to be renamed as a state-marked route, Illinois 130, all the way to the interchange. There may not be many Urbana dollars, but that still remains to be seen. But as far as why, I think a study would bear out the particulars as to the advantages, but in, in short, it's for access reasons. For ten years, we've been hearing about possible development along the Illinois 130 corridor, and this is all south of Interstate 74 now, but there's been various inquiries as far south as, you know, Curtis Road Windsor Road area, in the University Avenue, US-150 area. And in these initial inquiries, in almost every case, it is what is the access to Interstate 74 for a regional-type development? And they don't, when I say they, these inquiries don't view the current access to Interstate 74 as, as desirable. So if there was a direct access, a more direct access on High Cross Road, Illinois 130 to 74, where you can take it straight, you know, see the interchange, get on, it may be more perception than anything else, but that, as we have heard from inquiries through the years, is a very important component for making decisions as to whether development would occur in this area. Existing development, developers who are developing in the southeastern Urbana have extolled the merits of that, too, for what they'd like to do or continuing to do in Urbana. I think as a first-time visitor from the east traveling Interstate 74, it's kind of a, not a real prominent interchange the way it's set up right now. It's kind of an unusual situation. I would, I would think that folks coming from Ohio, Indiana, or whatever, you don't see any visible businesses or what have you. They, you know, they blow by, go by, and hit the Cunningham, Lincoln Avenue situation. So I think if there was an improved diamond interchange there with, I think that'd be probably something a little bit more prominent for our east area for development south of Interstate 74. But clearly, a study would need to be done. The state has talked about probably in the years 2012, 2015 timeframe of probably having three lanes in each direction between Mohammed and Danville. Now, that would be major, major tens of millions of dollars, you know, and of course, who knows what funding will be like then, but that's a desire. The volumes are continuing to increase. The commuting from the Mohammed to Champaign-Urbana, from the Danville to Champaign-Urbana, traffic volumes are growing, and that would be the opportunity. There'd be a lot of bridge and interchange work all along the way. So I think we would want to be in a position as part of that construction to, if there is going to be some diamond interchange, turn this trumpet interchange into diamond interchange, that would be the timeframe to get that done. And to be poised to do that, you would want to have the necessary, what's called an access study, that the feds require to be done. And it may, it, it may not be feasible, or it may be feasible, but if it is feasible, we're in 2005 right now, so it certainly allows enough time, ten or so, or more years from now, to allow that to occur, so. And let's make the decision once and for all. We had that opportunity back in late eighties, early nineties, when they did the major Interstate 74 work through Champaign-Urbana proper, and adding lanes and such, and modifying the diamond interchanges at Lincoln and, and such to the east, to the west and east, but, you know, we didn't follow through with the study, an access break study.
Are you saying that we actually had this on the radar back in the eighties, but we didn't follow through with a local study?
Right. There was, there was considerable objection from the same area folks that saw it as being a detriment to northeast, north of 74, so that wasn't, wasn't pursued. But I, at that juncture, too, we didn't have anything at all going on at the time in south I-130, no development like we have today. Berenger didn't really exist until a few years later. So a lot of things have changed since then.
And would the, the access study be... And would the, the access study be locally funded and locally driven? Basically, this council would determine.
Well, we've asked for grants assistance, so, including opportunity return monies, but I, I don't know. To answer your question, there'll probably be some local dollars. What the percent or what the amount will be, I can't answer that.
For the study, you mean?
For the study.
But you're saying it could be up to 90% of the actual diamond interchange could be not local dollars?
I, I'm.
Guessing.
Guessing. Yeah. It could be eighty, ninety percent.
Just another note, this is currently, that alignment is currently shown on our comprehensive plan. So, it's been designated for at least 15 years, probably longer. The, I'm looking at our proposed mobility map. Comprehensive plan will be changing in this area in a couple of different ways. We're not showing it more schematically. It's not, it's not prioritized in any set way. Our appendixy, the mobility map, talks about different categories of roadway projects. And that is one that are, one of three that are possible future roadway extensions. We have others that are planned roadway extensions. That's where we've done location study and we really know the alignment. So, I think we've, we're not pretending to know the best and precise alignment. Again, there aren't priorities shown. The other change is there is a reduction in land use density shown north of 74 with this comprehensive plan. And the study would look at the benefits of completing the interchange for serving uses on the south, primarily the south of 130, south of 74. So, that would be the primary benefit for land use and traffic impact. Another thing, you know, in evaluating this, and a lot of the residents have said, well, don't put it here, build a whole new interchange, you know, another section east or two sections east. And I think really, you know, trying to be conservation minded, you know, is it not better to look at improving what's already been constructed, working with what we have, than to, you know, undertake more growth inducing, larger impacts, further east where you really could get into some agricultural impacts? But as possible, some alternatives, analysis could be undertaken. And IDOT would actually require that as part of their early studies, that you can't just say, well, this is the only place it can be. You need to look at, as part of their environmental review, you look at other locations. I think it's possible to complete the interchange. We suffer so much in Urbana, and you'll hear so many meetings, that we don't have continuous roadway connections. And we get stymied sometimes in Smith Road, for example, where we plan an extension to Curtis Road and other, land ownership changes, and we're not able to complete those extensions. So, this is another example of just trying to improve and have more complete access to our developed areas as it currently exists. So, some, those are some of the reasons to look at it. And I just wanted to clarify that the current plan does still show it. I mean, current plan has it, the proposed plan continues to show it, but provides a little more guidance about the study that would need to follow.
Just a clarification, when you say the current plan, are you referring to the 1982 comprehensive plan?
Well, this area is covered in the 93 plan.
Ninety-three.
I don't think this was in the city during the 82.
So, the 1993 kind of update to the comprehensive plan showed targeted improvements at this interchange?
Shows a line.
Okay.
It shows a lot of roadway extensions. That was our ETJ plan. So, the 82 really looked mostly in the corporate limits. The 93 plan took the mile and a half. Both plans are really out of date. So, you know, we're beginning to work more and more with the draft plan, 2005 plan.
Okay.
I recognize myself, I guess.
Do whatever you want.
I'll hand up the chair for one comment. Libby, I think the point I'm trying to make is I think the Urbana comprehensive plan, or the future comprehensive plan, I may not like quite where the line is, but I think the notion that the University Avenue interchange can be extended in a way that served High Cross Road south of the interstate without increasing the potential for development of any of that existing property north of the interstate. I think the comprehensive, that would be my personal preference, and I think that's, the comprehensive plan does a pretty good job of articulating that by indicating that the intent of studying, studies there is to improve connectivity south of the interstate. I think that is significantly different from what the KUOT's plan, of the gist or the intent of the KUOT's plan is, which to me clearly still looks like drawing a ring around the city, although the northeast corner of that ring is kind of fuzzy now. And I think that's an area in which I would significantly differ. And that's why I would propose that anything we do by way of endorsement of this plan is done only to the extent that that is consistent with the Urbana comprehensive plan.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
That's a good motion.
Are any further questions? Not, a motion would be in order? Pat?
I move to send this resolution to city council with the recommendation for approval with, you want me to do it in two parts to add the language you want?
No.
Okay. With, with the change to the, the language, the now therefore be it resolved to, right now it just says after long-range transportation plan, semicolon, and replace it with a comma to the extent that it is consistent with the Urbana comprehensive plan.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. There being no further business before us, the next council meeting will be on March 21st in these chambers, and we are adjourned.